Good evening. Good evening. If we could all, if you'd like to get started. We have obviously a very, very cold house. We'd like to get started this evening. We do have, all board members are in attendance this evening. And if you could all rise to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Time, would you be able to please announce our exec sessions that the board has had?
Thank you. Yes, the board conducted three executive sessions. One on May 10th immediately following the board meeting that evening to discuss personnel. One on May 20th also to discuss personnel. And one this evening, May 24th immediately preceding this meeting, also to discuss personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to student recognition, Mrs. Carriello.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting me take a few minutes once again to bribe about our awesome students. So this year, we have had five of our students achieve the very distinguished rank of Eagle Scout. And as you know, the Boy Scouts have a proud tradition of producing the next generation of leaders. I don't think we need to wait until the next generation. These are already, these young men are already leaders in this school for sure and definitely in the community. They met the challenge and excelled to their commitment based on their commitment and their perseverance. This year especially is, this is an incredible accomplishment. Required hard work, dedication, and obviously service to our community. As a parent so recently, or recently so eloquently explained, through a pandemic, a horrible winter, a change of Boy Scout districts, online meetings, electronic signatures, these four boys and one that's missing tonight, these four young men earned Eagle Scout. This is truly an extraordinary accomplishment during exceptionally difficult times. You all should be very proud and we are very proud of you. So we have Grant Pakenova. Alexander Sheresko. Will Sharp. And Cross Hartman. The second young man who will be with us this evening is Connor McCorvey. And I just wanted to say how proud I am and you make us Spartan proud each and every day. But congratulations on this extraordinary accomplishment.
We would like to congratulate all, all four of you here and when we're at home. Congratulations on this incredible accomplishment that, as Mrs. Carriello said, was during a really rough time. But thank you for your service to the, to the community. Okay, moving on to visitor comments. We have several people sign in this evening. As always, comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments are to provide input to the board on items that are before us to vote. Speakers must be district residents and sign in. Because it is a busy meeting, there will be no, there will not be a response period after the comments. The first person signed in is Monica Scheiner.
Hi, can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Monica Scheiner. My husband, Bill, and I live in Center Valley. We have delivered two years. We have two daughters in the district. In addition to being a wife and a mom, I am also an educator. I have a master's in education from the University of Pennsylvania. I've taught in Texas, in inner-city Philadelphia, and in an environmental charter school. I have wanted to address the board and the district as a whole and the community for many months. Fear is the reason I haven't come forward until today. I am fearful of expressing my opinions and losing my friends, my family being ostracized, my daughters facing retaliation. I also believe fear is why you haven't heard from more parents. I understand the climate of today and it isn't pretty. Dialogue and debate should be used to seek understanding. But instead, we have cancel culture and the risk of being called terrible things. When I hugged my daughters goodbye from school this morning, excuse me, I realized that I needed to speak up. My goal is to help build a community where we can all be proud and a place where we can grow and prosper. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern about the diversity, equity, and inclusion training that was approved by this board last summer. Many school districts, in order to make things better during these times, have signed on to these programs because the words reflect our collective desire for people not to be judged or excluded. But these words often don't mean what one would expect them to mean. They have been redefined to mean something else. And as a result, these types of trainings are tearing school districts apart across the country. These trainings often concentrate on the differences between us and tell us to identify first and foremost with our race. This is undoing of the successes of the civil rights movement and puts us in categories that literally divide us. I have read Dr. Allen's proposal and I believe it falls into this category. The Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism tweeted an amazing quote today. It reads, "The best way to combat intolerance is not through assigning collective guilt to individuals based on their immutable characteristics. The best way to combat intolerance is by emphasizing our common humanity. Respectfully, that is the way forward." I implore you to reconsider this training. Thank you for your time.
Next signed in is Mr. Frank D'Angelo.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for letting me address the board and the members of the community who are here tonight. Tom Spalding. It's not often that we have an opportunity to thank our teachers. As many of the teachers standing out there know, they put in countless hours and they always cross their fingers in hope that they've done the best job that they possibly can do. And I know the teachers of this district do that on a daily basis. As a community member, I thank you. But I am going to take this opportunity to thank one of my former teachers. Right now, the Southern Lee High School District, much like most of this nation, finds itself divided as it ponders many core values that drive our future. In times of division, we look to our leaders for wisdom, for the expertise, and the guidance to transition to a more compassionate environment. As the district transitions from Dr. Ebson to a new permanent superintendent, I speak tonight to compliment the process and this Board of Education for bringing Dr. Larry Muslin to our school community. Knowing Larry since he was my 12th grade sociology teacher at Bishop Heathie High School in Hazleton, and then my colleague as a high school and collegiate baseball umpire, which for the record, I will note that I had a much better strike zone than he ever did. You will find in Larry the type of person and leader who will show the proper balance of empathy and courage, a resounding knowledge of school code and school law, and a personality that will prompt every stakeholder group to work at their highest level to continue to provide the children of our school district a quality academic, social, and co-curricular experience. Larry, thank you for what you've done for me. Thank you for taking on the interim superintendent position in this district, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Maria Alt.
Hi, my name is Maria Alt and I would like to speak again on the issue of critical race theory and diversity, equity, inclusion training in our district. It remains unclear to me when this board believed that a diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment was needed, let alone the sort of training and three-year action plan called for under the Dr. Allen proposal. We already have extensive policies and training in place to address unlawful harassment, bullying, and discrimination. Those policies cannot prevent individual incidents of discrimination or harassment from happening, but those policies are there to address those incidents and apply disciplinary measures where appropriate. I haven't seen any evidence that our district has been ineffective in implementing those policies and addressing those situations when they arise. Even if the board were able to state a clear need for additional training in this important area, the concepts in the Dr. Allen proposal are deeply troubling to those of us that believe people should not be categorized and judged by the color of their skin. Superintendent Ebson said at the last board meeting that I, that, and I quote, "Nor is it a critical race theory program. It is a diversity, equity, and inclusion program, and it is not designed to deliver or teach or instruct on critical race theory." But the plain language of the Dr. Allen proposal contradicts her. The Dr. Allen proposal is loaded with the language of critical race theory and expressly references a number of key figures in the critical race theory movement. It is difficult to understand how Superintendent Ebson has come to her conclusion that this proposal has nothing to do with critical race theory. I respectfully request that this board provide the community with a complete copy of the training materials that will be used to train our staff under this proposal so that we can confirm that and the purpose and intent of the training is entirely race neutral and never, for example, categorize students as oppressed or oppressor based on the color of their skin. That is not a lens that we would ever want any teacher or other staff in our district to bring to an interaction with one of our students. I'd like to continue my comments with additional three minutes at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Erin Lane.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Lane and I am relatively new to this community. This is my first board meeting. I have a daughter who is in first grade at Oakwell and my son is currently in pre-K. I want to start tonight by just acknowledging the amazing work of our teachers. What an incredible year. And I just want to get all of them around the class for two seconds because they just did such an amazing job this year. I wanted to talk tonight to advocate for our entire community. As a predominantly white school district, we have a responsibility to do this work. One argument I often hear is that studying TEI puts race at the forefront of our minds. There is no such thing as being colorblind. We see race when we interact with people. We all have implicit biases, every single one of us. The first step is acknowledging these biases and working to mitigate them with different strategies. And ignoring race is not the way. And by ignoring race, we're also discrediting our differences and various cultures. Again, the predominantly white district, we need to be acknowledging these differences to give our children perspective and holistic idea of our world. Another argument I often hear is that race should be taught at home. And I agree, it should be taught at home, but it also should be taught in school. In my line of work, I have been engaging with diversity and inclusion work intensely for almost two years. And I still struggle to have conversations with my children about race. We cannot assume that parents have the tools to have meaningful conversation with their children about race. Why don't we equip our teachers with the tools and strategies necessary to have these conversations with our children? And I've been pushed to have workshops for parents so we can continue to have these conversations in a meaningful way. While we necessarily can't change the diversity of our school district, we can control the education that we are providing our children. What we are doing is not working. And that was made very clear a few weeks ago when some children were reenacting the murder of George Floyd. We need to do better. We can do better. We have failed as a community and we need to fix this as a community. So I urge you to continue with the plan to include diversity and inclusion in our schools for our children. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Rubani Sudum.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. For those of you who do not know me, I'm a current high school senior. I have been going through this district since pre-K and I'm a girl at Southern Lee High. And I'm here to advocate for the diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm saying this as a student. So many parents, I think, are naive to the fact that racism doesn't exist at Southern Lee High. I have experienced it. My friends have experienced it. And at times, we felt like we have been alone in the school and nothing has been being learned. Just to clarify, I was also one of the students privileged to attend a meeting with the superintendent. Not once did the CRT come up, just to clarify. Critical race theory is 100% different than diversity, equity, and inclusion. What I am advocating for is the awareness that racism has to be taught in our curriculum and not just at the high school level, very early on, starting with kindergarten and pre-K and work up to 12th grade. Because quite frankly, as a student, I was in, as a student, I had been, like, for one, my name, my name is Rubani. I understand that for some people it might be an intimidating name. And I understand people would make up this name. However, I actually did have a teacher who refused to call me by my name and instead points at me and say even the entire year. I also think some of that education and training into our curriculum is also just to spread awareness to teachers to also understand how to handle situations such as these and learn that it is perfectly okay to ask a student, "How would you like your name to be?" At this meeting, I had also heard from other students their experiences. And one student in particular, who had a sibling who was diverse, literally said that they were scared to go to Southern Lee High. As a student who currently goes to Southern Lee High, I knew this was true and that something had to be done. And that two students who are reenacting the George Floyd was just appalling to see that our students are representing our school in such a way. And I think something needs to be done. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Karin Scherzudum.
I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Karin Scherzudum. I'm a speech student at Southern Lee High. Fear: We have nothing to fear but fear itself. Great speaker Franklin B. Roosevelt. One thing we should never fear is education, especially what is much needed in this school district and so critical in this line. And if you think education on racism and systemic qualities in this nation is not needed, I would like to share my own narrow personal experiences at the school. Not only have I been called a sand N-word multiple times, they call it a curry muncher, ask white Indians stink, insisted that, "Oh, maybe you should tell your Indian friends to have more beover." They call the scammer and trash, or maybe they call the terrorist. Many people at this school have called me a terrorist, a Muslim terrorist, and I'm not even a Muslim. Despite this, the same people that call me a terrorist show me 9/11 memes and 9/11 jokes, thinking it's funny. Despite this, my mother worked on the Northern Tower in 9/11. If it wasn't for a sheer quidditch, this work would have passed away, just like most of her homeowners. And despite this, at the end of the day, it's because of the lack of education that starts at the base level in our schools that allows speech to get shot at gas stations, get shot at FedExes, and get shot at number one Guadaluas. Despite our not being, and our only objective to create a state of equality for ourselves and have justice for all, it's simply against American ideals. And that's why we must introduce this new diverse education and inclusion act. So what I would like to ask you is to not fear. The truth is always there for those who are brave enough to see it. For that reason, I urge you to support diversity education. Thank you.
Next, we have Amy Musari.
Hi, my name is Amy Musari. First, I want to applaud the students. That was very brave. And I know that's very difficult to deal with among people who are supportive. I am a mother of a three-year-old little princess and a seven-year-old boy with severe autism. And I'm here to just support education with diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is very important. And the big argument I keep hearing is that it should be taught at home. But that's not enough. Because kids spend most of their days at school. And it is up to school to also educate them on things that are making them a better person and be able to contribute to society. Racism, diversity, equity, inclusion, and that is in history, science, English, everything. It's not, it's become so politicized, but it's a moral issue, a human issue. And to people who think that teaching kids too young is, that the government teaches them to be young, I think that's the wrong way to look at it. You want to teach kids early to support each other, to be good to each other, to be kind to each other. My three-year-old girl came home and said she didn't want to be brown. So she recognizes, we do teach color. And that's okay. But it's how we address that and how we teach people to be people with care and passion that really matters. I, I think the other big component that is important, kids need to hear this. Everyone needs to hear this from people who are from this background. It's not enough to expect a Caucasian parent to teach their kids about racism as it pertains to a black person. It's not enough to expect a patient of a parent of kids who identify as, of what we would say to a whole such orientation about having friends who are transgender or have a gender difference. They have to hear that from people who experience those reasons of prejudice to really understand. And it's not going into bias to just sort of bring us both together.
Next, we have Kimberly Geremilio.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Geremilio. I'm an addition in the community of the Cooper's Park. While my kids are a little bit too young to attend the district next year, we'll have one year. We've been here for about three and a half years so far. And you would think, assuming that my children are, that I haven't had the opportunity to experience or see the things that our great students described. And though they aren't in the district, they are on private daycare where my four-year-old was sent free, brought home some of the racial slurs that were being used in his three-year-old classroom. It was a little shocking for me. I thought surely it must be an exception because this school district has such an exceptional reputation. But I have come to find out that it's really not an exception. I've heard from the two very great students who spoke here tonight. I'm sure you probably think those are outliers. I think there are some that are not. I am currently in the process of adopting a child from Columbia. And I'm afraid, I'm afraid to send my child to the district for any of these things happen. I'm not proud of it. I want, you know, we can be proud of our school. I think it's very easy to try to politicize this issue and it's really just a human issue. It's basically, it's simply seeing people for who they are and reading them where they're at and caring about their feelings. It's not a political issue for me. I have, I have many friends who are affected by this, their children are affected by it, and just like two very great students who are affected by this every day. I would be shocked and disappointed if everyone of you were not affected by their stories. Hopefully, they touch you and they matter to you. I know it was hard for me to not, but I just that there's a banner on the wall that says, "Bullying only happens when," I don't know, I can't read it from here, "but it only happens when there's someone around who thinks it's okay." And that's the point of this training is to make sure that all of our children. Maybe our children are not the people who are saying these things or doing these things, but they can step in and be upstanders, not just bystanders. And they can support students like the two great ones that just sat here tonight. Again, it's not a political issue or it's not to make anyone stand out. There is, I forget if you said it, I think there, I'm going to break up a beautiful segment that theirs are such things as colorblindness. We are who we are, we make each other where we're at. So I support your decision to institute this training and I'm happy to have meaningful discussions with any of your participants. You may not be directly affected by it, maybe your children are perpetuating, but if we collectively stand up and seek out this issue, we can be proud of this school district. And I just wanted to mention, a news story that I saw this morning where a Connecticut middle schooler was arrested for tweeting the N-word about a student who was sitting in front of their main class. Don't let this school district have this district. Thank you.
We're moving on to approved board minutes. Motion to approve minutes of May 10th, please. May I have a motion? Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? And extensions? Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Ebson.
Thank you, good evening. We do have three items for board approval, but before we get to that, I just want to say a huge thank you to Rubani and to Karin Scherzudum. To come up here and to tell us your personal stories takes a lot of courage. We are in the business of education. That is why we all do what we do. That's what we've devoted our time to. And as I look around the room and I see all the teachers in this room, I know that there's a shared collective goal that every single student is safe, valued, and respected. That every single student has a positive experience at Southern Lee High. We can We can discipline incidents. We can levy punishments. We can have policies in place, and we do. But without tackling the root cause, without educating our staff in how to support our students and educating our students on how to support and work with each other, this is going to continue. You're hearing from students that there are problems and there are issues, and no amount of discipline and punishment is going to resolve that without a quality education program. Right now, as we said, this, this program, which was approved in June of 2020, is part of a needs assessment first and foremost. With anything we do, establishing a baseline, what are our needs? What areas do we need to look at is always the first step. The second piece of the process is a staff training and a series of staff trainings, which will look at a whole host of issues around how various groups of students have historically been treated and how we need to move forward and work to collaborate as a team to ensure students are supported. Once that training is complete, then the next phases are to look at how we educate and support students. At no point, and I will reiterate this again because there are people who still continue to feel that somehow there's a critical race theory plan. At no point in any discussion, anywhere, have we talked about delivering critical race theory instruction to students. What we have talked about is educating the entire community around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and understanding the needs of our various community members. And that's what we're committed to. We're committed to education. We're committed to focusing on working together to stop the kinds of behaviors that you just heard two of our students talk about. And that is going to take all of us working together to make sure that every single student feels valued, feels respected, feels safe in our school buildings, and doesn't experience the kinds of negativity and the kinds of comments and experiences that you've heard about. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we do have three items for approval, so I will hand it back over to you, Mrs. DeSai.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first item is our interim superintendent. A motion to contract Dr. Larry Luceline as the interim superintendent beginning in June. May I have a motion, please? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? We'd like to take this opportunity to say welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. And welcome, and we're very proud to have you come out of retirement for our district. So, and just so the community is aware that we, we're looking for an interim superintendent that had experience, and as a superintendent, he comes with over 20 years of that. So, welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you. Next item, you think you let me do that? Let's keep it all better.
So, yeah, the next item is a PSBA policy, policy maintenance program. So this is part of our annual membership with PSBA. And what this does is PSBA provide policy updates. So as new policies or new legislation comes out, they provide policy updates, sample policies. They work with us to maintain those policies and, right, you know, have been working on a process to transfer those policies into board up. So this is just an annual renewal of that agreement.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the PSBA policy maintenance program participation agreement, please? Are there any questions or comments about this? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, moving on. Dr. Edison, please.
So item C relates to the flexible instruction day application. Now, this is a process that PDE initiated a couple of years ago where they allowed for school districts to apply. It's a three-year approval, if granted, that allows districts to take up to five days in the school year and be able to use those as flexible instructions, so to be able to deliver online. It was designed and piloted by PDE to look at weather-related closures. And in those years where districts in particular had to do many, many closures and where makeup days were, you know, exceeding far into June, to be able to have the option, if they choose, to trade up to five of those for online. Doesn't commit us to using those five. It simply gives us approval that the state will count five of those days in the requirements for our 180-day requirement for students.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the 2021 PDE flexible instruction day application. Can I have a motion, please? Are there any questions or comments related to that?
How do we decide on, on one of these days? Will we utilize?
Looks like Mr. Ruth is coming up to maybe answer that.
Well, as far as how the decision, it's, it would be, it's very much in line with current snow days. So we would be looking, first of all, at the calendar, determining how many of those days are going to be makeup days. And then with, with online instruction, often the decisions as to whether it would be online would be based on a couple of factors. First, how many snow days have we had? So if we're getting towards the end of the school year and we've used an awful lot of snow days, then having those five days of flexibility, you know, could be one option. Another way would be looking at the particular weather circumstance and situation. So if it's an active snow event, if there are power issues, then that would not be a good opportunity to use a flexible day. If there's a situation where there's not, you know, sometimes we've had situations with icing, and so it's not an active storm, but roads are still difficult, that might be an option. So it really would be case by case, depending on the particular year, the level of snow closures, and what the particular inclement weather reason was on that day.
And there are a couple other things. If you look back just a couple of years ago, in Parkland, there was a bus fire, where, you know, a large person under the fleet was out of commission. You know, something like that happens, you're able to then transfer right away through the system. So it's whether emergency transportation issues, building mechanical failures, any of those things would count for the up to five days.
Would we choose to just do five? Yeah, that's an option as well, right?
It is a maximum of five only with this application.
Well, you could do the first five of any, of any crisis, right? You could do the first five snow days as instructional if we adopt this.
This just provides me the option of using them.
Yes.
I mean, that's my concern is that, you know, I think the teachers have done a great job with remote and I was able to witness that with my own child. But I still think it's a challenge, certainly for the lower grades. And I prefer that they be in person in June doing that rather than online in January. And it is a real concern also for snow days. There is some value in a, in a day off on a snow day, I think, for kids as well. So I'm just pretty reticent to, even though I understand this is only five days, I'd like to sort of understand the guardrails of, is it R? Would it be, would we utilize it as a last, a last choice scenario? Or are these going to be utilized, kind of depending on, on, on sort of where we think things are? Or do we not? Because it doesn't really say that in this plan. I mean, I guess I'd like to know sort of what, what our outlook is for utilizing the lesson plan.
I would say these fall back into what Commonwealth's basic education plan is, that this all falls under local control. So this just gives the local cap the ability to call these, which then places another superintendent to make the ultimate call with the superintendent, the team of superintendents, and how that is used. So currently, there's 384 of the 500 school districts in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have an active flexible instructional day application on file with PDE.
That, that's a good point you raise. I notice we tend to do snow days and other things in conjunction with our other Lehigh County schools, partly because of the needs of LCTI, I suspect, and other things for, for good reason. But I also thought throughout sort of the fall and as we responded to pandemic, there seemed to be, I felt as if, you know, we sort of tended to do all those things as a group for those same reasons. Would we consider what other districts are doing in regards to the flexible instruction day and deciding on our own? Or would we be deciding completely on the needs of Southern Lehigh separate and apart from other considerations in other local districts?
We have always decided for Southern Lehigh. Certainly, the superintendents across the county do talk in the morning, and that conversation, and our support services and transportation staff also talk. And those conversations are, what are you seeing? What direction is this weather coming from? How are the roads looking where you are? So there's, there's certainly information sharing that goes on. You know, and oftentimes, the weather is fairly consistent. And we have had times where individual districts, you know, I may talk to, you know, Salisbury, and we'll say, we're not seeing what people, you know, in the other part of the county are seeing. So we have made separate decisions where needed. So, yeah, we're not, we're certainly not tied into making the same decisions, but we absolutely share information and, you know, look at how things are and, you know, where, where the weather is coming from, what the roads are looking like, where it's coming from. And those, those pieces are all part of a much bigger conversation.
Can this be used on just a building level? If you had a, an illness outbreak at a building level? Or is, or do you have to apply a flexible instructional day district wire?
No, it can be used building by building. So if a building had a power outage or, you know, something, I don't want to say too many horrible things, but floods or something like, I don't tempt fate, but if a building had something like that, it could certainly be applied to just that building.
To use the example of Man's High School, two years ago, the building was closed for over two weeks entirely because of the flood.
Yeah, I would just, as I said, I mean, I think I'll vote for this, but just as a voice from one, one of nine, I, I would hope we would utilize this at the very extremes, and that is a first choice. Because I still think on the whole, kids are best served by being in class. And to the extent that we have snow days, frankly, think the early snow days are an advantage and sort of a nice throwback and, and a break from, you know, what can be a pretty intense year for even our youngest kids. I, I feel that that's still an important break. And so at least from my perspective, I would hope that we make these decisions sort of as we're running out of days and it's becoming clear that, you know, June's going to go late. And for those reasons, we begin to weigh the idea that this is a better idea, but I would hope we use it sparingly.
Is there anyone else who need a comment?
I was just going to agree with everything that Mr. DeMantis said in that last comment. This is a last resort because we all know kids learn best in classrooms. And I think we all still look fondly on snow days where, whether we were forced to shovel or got to build a snowman or go sledding it to sales. So I would agree this is a last ditch effort. And teachers do a remarkable job in the classroom. But in case of emergency, do you want to plant or something like that? We've had issues, you know, with high school plumbing or power outages with this. Could have been a good option for, you know, I wouldn't want to be in a high school in Man's two-week situation. But I agree with everything Mr. DeMantis said there. This is a last ditch option. I'm glad the state provides it, and I'm glad so many districts, 384 out of 500, take advantage of it. I think we should too.
Anyone else? I, I do agree with certain outlooks that Gani and Mrs. Gaiman said. I think that this is, the key word here is the flexible and having that opportunity if needed in an extreme situation. So any other questions, comments?
The one we all said, this is all pending approval as well. So we would hear about this first, should the application be approved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to curriculum, 5A. I know these 5A through C, if I'm not mistaken, we just, we just covered workshop. Is there anything else that would be presented for this evening? So items, does anyone object if I take items 5A through C together? May I have a motion, please? Any, any questions, concerns about them?
I just thought that for those, there weren't many people at the workshop there, and I, and I don't know which teachers here. And I would suspect somebody can, just real brief, I thought the, and I know this isn't, I know this is the 712 or languages, but I really thought the update that was provided by our folks, the teachers at the high school level as to sort of holistically looking at how we're going to address the teaching methods, that cool Latin, whatever that is, pedagogy, whatever that thing is. And I just thought I was really blown away by, by A, their effort in what had clearly been a lot of work to align this was sort of a new way of approaching teaching language. And I just thought that was probably pretty spectacular and something that I think should, since we got an awful large crowd here tonight, could just be very briefly shared. Mr. Cross, or, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, we're really looking forward to this. I, I want to publicly thank the world language teachers for the incredible job that they have done to us to the point where we put this proposal forward to board. The, the major shift, or what we can look forward to is looking at comprehensible input as a approach rather than teaching isolated vocabulary. So comprehensible input is really a method of instruction that makes language comprehensible by using a lot of gestures, visuals. And so what we love to see in the future is that 89% of language spoken in our courses are the target language, but that the teachers make that language comprehensible and have aggressive developments in a way, or as they move through the levels, using that comprehensible input, those gestures, and development of their growth, their correction through the other levels. Thank you, Mrs. Ross. Thank you, and thank you. I mean, the people who helped develop that. Mrs. Ross, it also did really seem like our language department was really dedicated and clearly took a lot of time to develop this. I just thought it was, I think A, it's a great idea, and B, you know, it's really a lot of hard work to get forward on that. So I appreciate that. I think the whole board does.
Yep, thank you. Thank you very much. So voting on 5A through C. All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, moving on to 5D, summer ramp up camps. Do we have any presentation on that?
There isn't a further presentation. This is related to last board meeting when we shared with you how we were using some of the Esther funding. So these were some of the camps that we'd mentioned. This is the specifics now of approving the individual camps.
Thank you. A motion to approve summer ramp up camps to be held in summer 2021. Are any questions or comments about that?
Well, just for those that weren't, again, at the workshop, I didn't know if we could have someone to, very.
This was from our board meeting from the last.
Summer ramp ups?
Yes. We'll have to have the assets on that.
Okay, I, I think it, I would like to have maybe a little bit of discussion here tonight about it just because I think, you know, it's important that we educate. I mean, I assume that some folks are being invited, but I still have some questions. I assume a lot of these are open to whoever would like to go. And so if I have some questions, I suspect.
Okay, that's where I pass for questions.
It looked to me like all students have the opportunity to attend.
They, they absolutely do, yes. Yeah, so I'll let Mr. Cross get into the details, but absolutely, it's open to every student. There are camps designed, you know, towards the end of the summer to get students back into the buildings and, you know, to provide activities. So as we've provided summer camps in the past, the difference is these are occurring right before the start of the school year in design. You know, we all know those long summer breaks. They're designed to get students kind of back into things. So, Mr. Cross, are there specific you want to add to that?
Yeah, these camps are made possible through Esther funding. As soon as our, upon board approval, we would be advertising these as soon as possible. Any student within those age ranges could sign up for those camps if they're a Southern High School district student as per federal fund usage. So camps are outlined in the attachment description. I look forward to some of these opportunities for our students to offer a ramp up to focus in on math, science, STEM, and literacy camp as well as an Irish camp. So I thank all the teachers who put these ideas forward. It would be possible without them putting that together or anything proposing these ideas.
Yeah, estimated costs are listed at, most of them are around $1,400 or $1,500. What, what is that? Is that cost for students to do the? Is that cost for student to the district? Is that, and I assume obviously it's free to our students? What, what is that estimated cost in that institute?
That would be compensation for the hour we're waiting for the teachers, as well as a small other to purchase resources for the camp.
So each one of these camps only costs about fourteen hundred dollars. And then that's going to be paid by the federal funds?
That's correct.
Which are tied to the, I guess, Care Act or some, one of the federal acts. Why, how many of these have we done? I know we do some things. Are we doing Liberty Trails or anything like that this summer? Or what's the status of that? Because it's.
Liberty Trails we are not running, because the planning has to happen for Liberty Trails quite some time ago as far as making the reservations for the camps. So about the time when they would have had to have made those reservations, we were still very, very soft on like, as far as travel and transportation and the whole street state. And so Liberty Trails was happening for this year. And we do hope to plan to bring that back as a very well-attended camp and a great service to our community. So we hope to bring those trails back. Camp Invention is not a camp sponsored by Southern High School district, but that is one that we, how we, it is one that's come through in our building at Hopewell. We will be also hosting Camp Invention this year. On our previous board agenda, we did approve the kindergarten as well as the preschool camp.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are great ideas. And hopefully, we'll gather feedback on it. And, you know, at that cost, it seems something that the district could afford potentially going forward. I'm kind of blown away at the, at the relatively low cost to run these. And they seem like some really good programs. So I hope we are able to get the word out and folks take advantage of these camps. But I will say, as a Liberty Trails, huge fan, huge fan. Would love to see that continue next year. Thank you.
And some of the costs, the startup costs for curriculum writing here. So the kindergarten costs might actually be a little less expensive, physically, for the hours each to develop units for the camps.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to five E, a motion to approve the mindful education system trauma-informed mindfulness in schools professional development training contract by the Pratish Sinha Foundation. I have a motion. Are there questions and comments related to this? All those in favor? All, yes, Mr. Dymant?
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And I can't, I'm not necessarily going to be able to pronounce the foundation either. But can I hear and understand a little bit about that particular foundation? And the mindful education system?
It looks like Mr. Ruth is up.
Yeah.
So yeah, so first, the story about this level of training goes back to Act 18 of 2019, which is an extension of Act 44, which is the school safety and security provisions that occurred in 2018, 2019. Act 18 of 2019 required all school districts provide both their school board directors and their professional staff with trauma-informed training. We've completed the school district staff requirement of trauma-informed training this current school year. However, it was done in a fully virtual, large group environment, where there was not a ton of activity, where there was movement between the faculty and staffs and adaptation to go along with that. So in that process, this bugman, this is Gary Yello, Dr. Promiak and myself, along with Mr. Cross, Mr. Jordan, have been working to build the professional development plan for the school year with a focus on relationships and trauma-informed practices, classroom-specific relationships. So the two parts of what that program looks like for the year. Part one is bringing in Thomas Murray, who's a local and national speaker on classroom relationships specific to both the world called personal authentic, building a personal authentic classroom relationships in classroom. So he'll be leading our administrative staff in a retreat, as well as providing a work with our district staff, as well as our district staff, who read his book on personal authentic relationships. The second component is the Pratish Sinha Foundation. This is a local foundation in Allentown, where they look at essentially admissions of citizens, children, adolescents and adults on mindfulness, and it started through yoga, and specifically looking at yoga programs in class, in school settings, primarily working with students in the Allentown School District and Bethline School District, and the use of yoga to help really look at some of those challenging situations and get through those challenging situations through self-regulation, learning, positive climate, for simple, accessible mindfulness. So what we're going to be doing with the Pratish Sinha Foundation, again, the background of this, it gives a very well, you know, to Mr. Dymant, to your point, in terms of the board directors of this 503(c). You know, currently, the president of the board, Pratish Sinha, is the president and CFO of M C Bank. Vice president at Air Products, professor at Cedar Progress, is a really well-organizeded organization. It did receive a $500,000 randomly from the state of Pennsylvania to operate. And it comes out with the founder, her one of her children took his own life as a result of challenges that he had related to experiences. And from that, she wanted to build mindfulness and, you know, build a process to support young people when they face challenging situations. So generally, we'll be using this as the second component of our professional development for the school year. The nice thing about this is this will be a six-hour staff training, where every staff is broken up into age-appropriate groupings, and they're given a toolkit of fifty-plus activities that they can do in their classroom to prepare students for challenging situations. When our team met with the Pratish Sinha Foundation about planning this, one thing we talked about is we instituted a social-emotional learning period K to 12, whether it's the morning meetings at the elementary level, whether it's the Spartan period advisor period at secondary level. And the conversation we had with the Pratish Sinha Foundation was, that's not enough. This is us to be having a prior test. How can you build a regulated student regulation prior test? Help us just adjust and prepare students to test the camp test. How can you build this as a component? So this also comes with school-based coaching. So it'll come into classrooms and help our teachers through that process as well. So this is, I don't know if that's enough information for you?
Yep, that's helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, just a comment that I think, given the amount of stress that so many of our students are under and the levels of mental health issues and concerns that we have, I think this is giving them the tools, things like this, that are tools that they can implement on a day-to-day basis and training our staff in it is really well-wanted.
And I will say, we did meet with a pretty large group of teachers, school counselors, school psychologists and other stakeholders. And as we were planning this inside from the ministry, we met with them to discuss social-emotional learning, because that is also a lot of the targeted through the federal COVID dollars. And everything they were talking about fit right into the two groups, you know, both the Pratish Sinha Foundation and Tom Murray, who we were already kind of speaking about and planning for. So that foundation for the school year really speaks to a lot of those basic things that, you know, reconnecting. So essentially, when we look at this year, this bugman has talked a lot about the idea that we have to reconnect and rebuild a lot of things. So this focus allows for the reconnection, rebuilding, that work will be done with our staff from a professional development side.
You said it is K to 12? You, professional development.
So yeah, for Pratish Sinha, it's K to 12, and then Tom Murray, both K to 12, yeah.
I just might have quickly, after what Mr. Murray said, and also say that I appreciate that teachers who are under a great deal of stress this year as well. I was happy to see that teacher self-care is also a major component of this. And I think investing that in our staff, both for our students and making sure our staff are able to learn those tools and have those tools as well for themselves is wonderful. I just want to thank you for using, pursuing this title to fund usage in this way. Just say thanks, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Dr. Sweeney?
I think that it's also clear that hopefully, you know, these students would be able to bring some of that home to parents, because I think as parents, we've clearly been under a great deal of stress over the past year. Just, I know this is a little out of order, but I couldn't collect myself well enough earlier with respect to the debate regarding diversity, equity and inclusion. I appreciate everyone speaking. Regardless of their perspective, it takes a great deal of courage to come before such a large group of people. And certainly for the students to share such experiences is difficult to convey and very difficult for me to listen to. I think part of the problem is that a lack of awareness of what is truly going to happen with this. And I think we probably could have done a better job of providing information before it got out there and turned into something that it wasn't intended to be. So I think that's a lesson for us. And I would encourage, as we move forward with this with the administration, to continue to bring forward, like we always do. I think part of the problem is workshops, disgusting, and not a lot of people attend workshops. And we certainly have, as a group, talked about how we could restructure meetings so that more people are aware of the work that goes on before the business meeting, because that's what this is. And that's why there isn't a lot of interaction. And it is awkward, you know, for us to hear comments and not be able to respond or clarify. So, you know, I think it's clear that this is something that has struck a nerve in our community. I think if there's anything positive, because I am a more positive person generally speaking, that one good thing that has come out of all of this and will continue to improve for us is awareness that there is clearly a problem. And unfortunately, I will tell you, it has, it does start a lot younger. You know, we have high school students here, and I know someone spoke with perspective of pre-K experience. It is happening, sometimes in a lesser degree. It's just, you know, people make assumptions. A lot of times, for example, if your skin is brown like mine or my children's, you're told, people assume that I'm Latina, which is fine, nothing wrong with that. But, you know, like, I think that what we could potentially gain is broadening the horizons of our children, because realistically speaking, like somebody else said, our kids do spend a lot of time in school. Teachers do them more than I do on an average weekday. And they're going to go out into the world and interact with people and participate in communities that are more diverse than this one. And make the mistake, this is not unique to Southern Lehigh, as we all know. I dealt with it growing up too, and I didn't grow up anywhere near there. It's just, it's an unfortunate fact to our society.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
No, just on that issue, I think that is a very good sentiments. And the only thing I think I would add is that I voted against that. And I was in a hotel room in Harrisburg on Zoom, I don't know, Gettysburg. And I remember, the reason I voted against it, and I stated it clearly, I had a number of questions about it. And even its scope beyond race issues. And the answer to my question was that, you know, we won't know what it's going to be until, until we get the survey back, and then we're going to design it from there. And I think, for me, that's the concern. I, you know, I applaud the students who spoke today. And I listened to that, and it makes a great impact upon me. And it's certainly real, right? The question for me then is, what is the appropriate remedy? And I feel as if, to Dr. Sweeney's point, that I don't think we've defined the remedy well for the community. And there is a site to critical race theory in Dr. Allen's proposal, it's there. I mean, no getting around it. And I don't, I've been, you know, so the question is, how do we make people feel belonged? How are we inclusive? How do we achieve all the things? And I think everybody that I heard speak tonight had the same goals. I had no one, I heard no one stand up and say, you know, division is good, or anything like that. I think we have the same goals. I know we do. And yet, we fall short of those goals as a district and as a community. What I would ask this board to do as we go forward, especially as we look to bring in a new superintendent, is to start, and let's clearly define how we are going to address this to the community so that they can feel confident that the program we choose does not itself further polarize the community. Because I do feel our current proposal, as we've seen tonight, is further polarizing. And maybe it's misinformation, maybe it's not understanding. I really feel that we need to find ways to have a program that we, as a community, can accept and understand and get behind as a community that doesn't further divide and polarize. And I'm not saying ours does that. I guess for me, I just continue to have a question exactly, what is this program? I don't know that any of us nine know exactly what the program is. It may be a great program, and maybe the community would look at it and say, that's a great program. But I think there is fairness on the side of asking the question, what exactly is the program? Because the program does cite to, I think, some polarizing ideas that are problematic.
Know what the program is going to look like. That, that's the whole point of a needs assessment, right? All, you know, to my knowledge, and certainly if I'm incorrect, I voted for a proposal that incorporated a needs assessment. I have a feeling it's the professional development component that it's getting people. But unless you know what the problem is, you cannot solve it. And so we will get the results of the survey. That is where, you know, everyone has, you know, an opportunity to contribute to that assessment, right? That Evan said to everybody, reminders were given. I think it is important to hear from the community what they think the needs are. Literally, we have one. How to address it remains to be seen. You know, I don't think realistically, we're going to be able to, we're not going to revolutionize the curriculum. I think what you're, what, in my mind, this is, is you bring awareness to it. Because if you don't expose people to it, and you don't identify a problem, you're never going to get anywhere with it.
Oh, no, and I 100% agree with you. And there clearly is a problem.
You can't be afraid to find out more, not to do more.
Well, but that's, but we've already, I believe, hired, right, someone who's going to implement a training.
No, he's not, he's implementing a training, but that's under the direction of the administration. He always.
But that person cited, but he cited critical race theory. And my point is.
It's number, reference number six.
Right.
If you do any scientific paper writing, which I don't, you know, hello, I, you know, you do. Just because somebody uses a citation as a sixth reference.
Well, there's only six, I think there was only six.
Yeah, so it's the last.
Well, it's one of six. That's twenty, that's fifteen percent of them.
But it's the last one.
Okay.
When you do a scientific paper, you have to list every reference you've used in that paper, any, any reference. It doesn't mean it's the mainstay. Like suddenly it became the mainstay of this proposal, which is not, I'm not, I don't disagree. Like, I understand why people would be suddenly upset with thinking that we're implementing critical race theory, but at the same time, that's not what's actually happening. And you can't be afraid to, if you don't find out more information, Jeff, Mr. Dymant, you're never going to know.
No, and I agree with you that a survey is great, finding information is great. And I think we agree on the goal of the outcome. And I think we agree that there's a problem. I'm only saying that I'm not fully assured, because I know for a fact myself, I don't fully know what's about to happen in reaction to the survey. And all I'm saying is that whatever, whatever our reaction should be, it should be one that doesn't further polarize or divide. That I think is necessary.
You may agree a lot, actually, even though we don't.
I agree, I think we do agree.
But we have to, we're going to decide that here.
Okay, that would be good. I don't have that feeling.
But that's what people need to understand, like the needs assessment. Every survey has been brought forward over the past year. We've had a lot of surveys. And what have they been, what have we done with them? They've been up on that screen that people can't see at home, or they've been on a Zoom screen when we were at home. It's going to be brought forward here. And then, of course, there will, I'm sure, be more opportunity for there to be input from us as board members, from teachers, from community members, because it should come from within. And I mean, it just, it's a, it's a process. I mean, you have to allow that process. I mean, you have to allow that process to start somewhere, and we will be the ones guiding it. So it's good that people are coming forward and speaking, because now we're hearing where people stand on certain elements of it. And I respect that, whether or not I personally agree with everything that's being said by a community member. I respect everyone for taking the time to be here and share them with us. And now we will keep that in mind as we move forward with it, that's all.
Right. And yeah, just to, just to clarify again, the proposal that you approved in June of 2020 was for a needs assessment, which included the survey and data analysis, discipline data, academic data, demographic data of the district, to work with the district, so gather all that information, create a needs assessment, and then to work with the district on developing a three-year action plan. The content of that three-year action plan is to be determined based on the needs assessment. So there isn't a program, we keep talking about implementing a program. The only piece that is being implemented is some professional development for staff. Just as you have heard this evening about many other professional developments that we've offered to staff, the agreement is professional development for staff and needs assessment leading to the district collaboratively creating a three-year action plan about what steps need to be taken in the district around the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. That is all that's been approved, that is all that is being focused on. And so the fact that there isn't a defined program yet is absolutely deliberate and intentional, because you don't define the program before you've finished a needs assessment.
Would we be open then to having any organization develop the plan and implement the plan? Or are we only going to be able to work with Dr. Allen to implement and develop the plan going forward?
So your, the agreement is that Dr. Allen works with the district to develop the plan. You can certainly pull in whoever else you, you choose to pull in. He's going to be responsible to lead the coordination and development of the plan. Who, what plan, what the plan consists of, who implements it, which advisors you consult around that is, is entirely open. It's, there's a very fixed scope of what, of what was approved.
In, in the proposal, there's five modules that are already outlined. That is the plan, is to deliver the education.
For the professional development, for professional development. That's the only piece that covers. It does not cover any work with students, it doesn't cover any curriculum.
I understand, but those five modules would go to the student teachers.
Right.
It does say on there that it can be adapted, added to, subtracted from on there, the professional development piece.
Right. That is a program outline that has, you know, that is creatively developed, but certainly there can be additions, deletions. It, it's a collaborative process, hence hiring a consultant rather than buying one off the shelf, because he can certainly adapt that. So those are the broad frameworks, the, the details, the specifics of how it will be worked out, when it will be delivered, which groups is also be determined.
Anyone else have anything? We kind of went on a little bit of a tangent, but.
Sorry.
No, no, that's, it was important to be said, so I think that was, I think that was good. And I think that it is important to hear that, over and over, that we've heard now, that this is for the professional development of our staff after the needs assessment is completed. And, you know, maybe, we didn't say that, that it wasn't clearly before, but I think we've said it over and over today, and I certainly, certainly have said it at the last meeting. And I just have to say on the same, you know, topic that I have to acknowledge is two students that didn't speak today. And I just, taking it a step further, listening to their stories and then imagining those students going back to class and having to learn. And when you are not feeling safe, secure, valued, you're not learning. And so I feel like it's so, it's even more so important, because we are here to, to teach and educate. And if you're not feeling, if, if a teacher's not calling you by your name, and that's what you're going to be focused on, you're not going to be sitting in a classroom learning. So I just have to give that a piece since we are on this topic.
Could I just add one more clarify? Because I, I've heard a couple of times that, you know, maybe it wasn't clear or wasn't discussed. I just want, just as a reminder, when this was raised in June of 2020, Dr. Allen attended that board meeting, and the board had time to question him, to discuss with him. So I just want to be clear for people that perhaps hadn't joined that meeting, that there was, in a board meeting, a long conversation about this proposal, and there was opportunities for board members to interact directly. And, and so that piece, now, it was a while ago, and obviously a lot has happened since then. So certainly we want to keep talking about this, but the initial proposal was fully discussed during the board meeting.
And I, to clarify, I didn't mean that, we didn't understand that. I meant maybe that the, that the public didn't understand that, so, yes. So, okay, so back to the original motion five E. We already had a second, and now we're voting. So all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? And moving on to five F, motion to approve the 2021, 22 student handbooks with recommended, recommended changes. This was discussed at workshop, our last workshop. Any, may I have a motion, please? Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Nothing under six, under technology. Motion to approve agreement with Marvin Lehigh IU to provide discovery streaming digital video library. May I have a motion, please? Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to eight A, approvals of differences of the bill list. Motion to approve the bills listed dated May 24th, 2021. May I have a motion? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to eight B, the election of the board treasurer. In accordance with our public school code, we'll elect a treasurer to serve one year beginning the first day of July. Motion to approve the recommendation of Ms. Kyle Gannworth, treasurer. May I have a motion? Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Number nine, nine A. Nine A is the motion to approve the purchase of natural gas bases from UGI Energy Services. May I have a motion? Second? And questions or concerns on this? I think we need to point out that there is a savings to the district for this, 28,000. I'm going to, Mr. Burden wants to, I'd rather write on that, but would like to point out the, the savings to the district, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Our next, eight, nine B, motion to approve anticipated purchase of natural gas through Provident Energy Consulting. Can I have a motion, please? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to human resources, ten, ten. Ten A through Emmes and Mary, does anyone oppose, opposed if I take all of those together? May I have a motion? Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? I would like to acknowledge that we have two retirements. One of 31 years, which I have to acknowledge as a food service worker, Ms. Ferris. Very impressive, and we thank you very much for your service, 31 years to the district. And Ms. Betts of 17 years as a food service worker to the district, thank you. And we do have some. And we do have some new staff that are, I don't know if any of them are in attendance this evening, but we would like to welcome. We got a new elementary teacher, a technology teacher, and a guidance counselor, all hired in response to retirements. So welcome, welcome. Moving on to 11, other business? Mr. Dimming?
Either new business or other business. I was, just, there's been a number of updates from CDC and changes to state policy, as far as I know. And I was just curious what these pandemic team and what the district is looking at in regards to face coverings, the effect of, you know, recent changes in state policy and federal policy for vaccinated individuals, vaccinated teachers in this particular case, vaccinated students. Will there be, is there an update forthcoming? Or what, what if anything is the status of that?
So at this stage, and the pandemic team did discuss the percent, when we look at the coverings and numbers of vaccines, we still have a large percentage of students not vaccinated at this stage. So the pandemic team looked at that and said, we're going to stay with the restrictions in place until the end of this school year. And then all indications being that next school year, we'll be back to a, a much more typical operating situation. Mr. Roof, I don't think you want to add to that from the team?
No, May 14th, the reaffirm that they recommended that school districts maintain their current existing health and safety plans until the end of the school year. The CDC did the same on May 15th. When you look at the, in terms of fully vaccinated individuals, as of May 21st, about 4,000 fully vaccinated individuals the age of 15 and 19 in Lehigh County, like a little higher than 4,000. So primarily that would be in the high school, grade scale, 11, 12. Fully vaccinated adults, we ever collected, as we shared at this meeting, we never collected. The full vaccination status of employees in the district. So it's overwhelming that the majority of individuals will not be fully vaccinated, should they choose to be. In that, the Secretary of Education, African Secretary of Education, did speak that he does not intend to believe that DDE will require vaccination for the school year. Other than that, there are less than 10 days of school until the end of the year. We are talking St. Louis about changing exterior components. In terms of interior masking for non-vaccinated individuals, the face covering order is still in place until 70% of the adult population is vaccinated, which I believe was passed up yesterday, or today it's in 68 range. At one shot, 51, what's something at two shots? That's all that we have though.
I don't think, you know, it probably makes sense not to change it towards the end of the year. It wasn't towards the end of the year. I think the signs, I guess at this point, if we follow the signs, would be that vaccinated individuals, you know, don't need the mask, and therefore unvaccinated people are not endangered in the schools if subjected to vaccinated unmasked individuals, right? The other issue that I, I do think frankly, even at, at this late date, is worth looking at, is masks. I understand it's, you know, almost zero chance of contracting something outside yet. There's probably some relative minor danger to actually having a mask on running around. So I didn't know if we had, because, yeah, there's some neat activities towards the end of the year here, you know, field days and you know, if the science allows for it now, I was curious if the district. Yeah, I agree that for the most part, you know, let's just stick with the status quo, even if, you know, for what it is, and start again. Oh, I do think, I'm curious if there's any discussion, thought about relaxed, relaxing mask requirements for, for children outdoors at recess, so.
I'll do that, I mean, in terms of athletics, the spring athletic season is in districts play. In, in district play, we're following what's in the health and safety plan for people to maintain distancing throughout their play, or without your mask. And there's also components, as we discussed previously, with opposing, opposing teams having specific rules of which we're following. In terms of recess, it's, it's an interpretation of that question. So the likelihood of transmission outdoors, specifically with that injury, is extremely low. The wording in the, in the universal mask orders is consistently maintain distance. So that's been the conversation that we've had around that. And, you know, obviously, you know, there's different interpretations of that limitation.
I appreciate the pandemic team looking at that. I'm not in any way trying to be critical, I'm really not, I'm just, I think it's important for folks. I'm sure I'm not the only one, you know, it's on their minds, and, and I think we're encouraged and thankful that, you know, we continue to look at that. And, you know, and like I said, I, I don't know that maybe changes at this late date is really all that, that helpful. I just think it's helpful to know that you guys are on top of it and considering the various options and weighing the various risks and, you know, I come down, well, you've come down. So I appreciate that. But I do think that's something that, you know, to the extent we can communicate that out to folks that we're thinking about these things, it's always a good thing. Thank you for, and I, I look, I trust you, Tom, I trust, I trust the pandemic team. Appreciate your hard work, and I know it continues, and, and it's a lot of meetings and thinking about these things. So it's not meant to be critical in any way. Just thankful for it, but I think that helps clarify where we are on the issue. Thank you.
We will, we will be bringing updated health and safety plans out, because the reality is that in the next four weeks, we will be starting summer athletic programs. So we've already been in contact with St. Louis about that, I don't know what that looks like. And it's likely to be, like, that the summer looks very different than, you know, what we have in the past. And that transition is for that.
Does anyone else have anything else on the other business? There's nothing under communications. Your business, I'm under 14A, I, looking at the board reports. I do encourage people to look at the board reports. It is actually kind of exciting, will be the board reports, because there's, looks like there's some normalcy happening. A lot of events that are, that are highlighted in each of the schools, and I encourage people to look at those. And it does seem like there's a little bit of normal coming back. So thank you for, all the staff for providing those. On to visitor comments, we do have visitor comments. First sign in is Ms. Maria Alt. The same, I won't repeat the same comment, I think we've all heard it.
Back to the slide to face the audience. I want to say that students who spoke up, I completely 100% understand on multiracial, on black, on white, on Hispanic, or American Indian. When I was in school, I was called a neighbor, I was called a spit, I was called a dot head, and I had my head slammed against the wall. My grandfather did not, who was white, did not approve of my father, who was dark-skinned. That did not stop him. They eventually had me, my grandfather got to know my father and loved him like a son. My great-grandmother was a slave on my great-great-grandgrand's plantation. I know all about racism, and I want help. But this proposal is not the way, and I'm going to continue why. Superintendent Edison said at the last board meeting regarding the Dr. Allen proposal that, and I quote, "noted in this proposal is related to student curriculum or delivering instructions to students." Yet here again, the play language of the Dr. Allen proposal contradicts Superintendent Edison's statement. The proposal included the following statements under action plan. First, quote, "identification of targeted areas of improvement, schools, grade levels, content areas," end quote. That's curriculum. And second, quote, "recognitions regarding the development of student initiatives associated with diversity, inclusion, and equity across all grade levels," end quote. That's more than just some quote-unquote training for staff. Finally, the minutes from the school board meeting held on June 22nd, 2020 state, and I quote, "Dr. Allen's three-year action plan allows us to be part of the curriculum," end quote. I don't know how anyone can argue this isn't about curriculum, when the school board itself says that it is in its own minutes, minutes that every board member here, except Mr. Timmy, thank you, voted to approve. minutes that every board member here, except Mr. Dimming, thank you, voted to approve. I respectfully request that this school board move to turn with the Dr. Allen proposal and immediately assist all expertise associates with the proposal. The survey, no pre-established needed evaluation plan. No minimal for responses to be statistically meaningful and representative of the population. Three, worries about who will respond and who won't. We are aware of a number of people who didn't respond to the survey because they were offended. Lastly, fundamentally, why would we use base, base policy decisions and actions on an unscientific survey that is likely to produce unreliable results? Again, I want to help. I understand about racism and I'm here to help. This proposal is not the way.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Mobley?
For those of you who don't know me, Lori Mobley, Fort Pitt's, my last one is graduating this year. I'm a Black woman, member of this community. And I'm here to thank you for taking on the hard tasks. There are incidents in our schools. My kids have been through a lot. And I'm not going to repeat the things that they've been called and empower those words. My youngest was told in 1999, you should go to school for kids with brown skin. My daughter listened to classmates use the N-word almost every day this school year. Some people might think that the worst incident that happened would be a death threat, a direct death threat to students of color in this school, but it's not. That's not it. It's that we have students who are being shipped away at incident after incident, being forced to build a tough skin, the skin that students are telling them they shouldn't have. Monica mentioned earlier that people are afraid to speak up, and you're right, they are afraid. There are people in this room that are afraid to speak up about the need for better education on diversity, on inclusion. They're afraid for their students, for their children to be targeted more. They're afraid that their homes could be vandalized because there are such strong negative influences in our community. We heard from students tonight. Thank you for being here. There's a lot of students with a lot of lists. There's a lot of issues. And if we aren't teaching our staff and our teachers how to be better supportive of our students, we can't move forward. And maybe there will be changes to curriculum at some point after a very vigorous curriculum process, which has been explained at length. But there may be needs for changes. Mike Andrew has been quoted, "In diversity, there is beauty and there is strength." If we aren't discussing diversity, we aren't discussing race and differences in a safe and healthy way, we can't make progress for students that are suffering. And we can't teach other students to accept and see the beauty and strength in those differences, be it race and ethnicity, be it their choice of clothes and how they cut their hair, LGBT2IA, gender identity, different family structures, whether they're adopted, whatever it is, they need to feel safe. And if we don't discuss these things, starting young, three years old, my son in kindergarten, that's where it starts. And it's not happening at home, and that is obvious. When I spoke last June, I know I put this up and I know about referring this. And I know that people can stand up here and bicker back and forth and get their extra time. So I'm going to finish by saying it is important. And we have students that are hurting and changes need to be made. And thank you to those who are taking the time to take on the task of facing and making the changes to discuss diversity, equity, inclusion and equality to make it safe and comfortable for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, who's the director?
Thank you. I applaud also the young lady and the young gentleman who briefly spoke up tonight during the citizens' comment time treatment. The bad experience is obviously unacceptable and inexcusable. Racism has no place in our schools. Racism is evil in all of its forms. It damages all of our souls. Please do not conflate an opposition to critical, of critical race theory as tolerance of racism. And that is what is happening here. Children who bully others for any reason, race, gender, religion, should be dealt with in the most serious ways possible, suspension and expulsion. Generally, those who promote critical race theory know very little about it. Critical race theory by extension to diversity, education and including, inclusion platform place a hyper-focus on race, which is the definition of racism. CRT is completely ethnocentric view of American history. It ignores American exceptionalism and liberty. It has no basis in a balanced teaching of history. Kindergarten kids do not need to atone for their sins of their ancestors. That is what CRT promotes, and that is evil. CRT does not promote racial unity or understanding. Those who are familiar with it know that CRT teaches kids that not only is the system hopelessly racist, but they are hopelessly racist as well. How does this promote mutual respect and understanding? The answer is, it does not. The board and the superintendent likely believed that these programs would succeed without opposition because the public was not paying attention. Citizens are paying attention now. DEI and CRT have no place being administered in Southern Lehigh. I believe in this board and an alliance of educators, parents, concerned student leaders can work together, can work together with the faith community and minority leaders to work for real racial understanding in our district. That can begin right now, we do not need the results of the survey. Finally, I am incredulous in fact that Mr. Joseph Allen is a de facto head of his DEI effort in perpetuity. It insults the intelligence of all concerned parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Monica Shumlin.
Hi, thank you for listening again. I appreciate all of the speakers tonight and your bravery for coming forward. This is obviously a very difficult topic for all of us and needs to be explored further. I just wanted to say that I'm horrified that anyone would treat anyone in that particular manner and that I am not against curriculum that would include diversity, inclusion, tolerance, learning about race, or any other difficult topic. There's a lot of understanding, compassion and healing that needs to occur not only in our district, but in our country. It should never matter what color someone's skin is, and no one should ever be treated differently because of that. We all need to stand shoulder to shoulder against prejudice, discrimination and racism. My point is that this particular training is concerning to me. And I feel like, based on what I've seen implemented in other school districts, that this is the wrong approach for us. Maybe if this teacher training was made public to the teacher, to the parents, to the public, that we maybe could lessen some of our fears and to alleviate what has happened in other districts. And that is my concern here. I have also read about the authors of the program, and they are experts in their field on things that are concerning like CRT. There are things that have happened in other districts that include things like teaching in racially separate groups, holding parent meetings only for whites and then everyone else, breaking students into groups of oppressors and oppressed. This to me is not acceptable, and I don't want to see that here at Southern Lehigh. I don't see that solving any of the issues that these students brought up today by paying more attention to race and not also attention to other factors. The term equity, in my opinion, has changed over time. And these new definitions of equity is concerning to me. If you are in favor of the current definition of equity, that means that you expect all outcomes to be the same. And I don't understand how that can happen in a classroom full of individuals. Any difference in outcome according to DEI trainings that I have read means that there must be racism in the system. There's no other factors that you may consider. And I think that's, I think that's a problem. Sorry, I'm out of time. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you. That concludes visitor comments. We do not have a need for executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn please? All right, good night.